Hi there, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Tuesday, September 28th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to honor. We are gonna recess from regular session and convene into executive session in the first-floor conference room. When we are ready to open it, convene into a work session, I will be back out and make said announcement. Thank you very much. Howdy again, everyone. Thanks for waiting us out. The time is 7:17 PM. We have recessed from executive session, and we will be convening into work session in the conference room in three minutes. Thank you very much.
Was it on point or what?
It was.
Oh, yeah, now you wanna die. At least it'll be before his death.
All right, the time is 7:19 PM. We have recessed from executive session, and we're convening into work session. We'll begin with item number 3A, which is discussion regarding the agenda items. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that one?
Mr. Long, just a comment about. The question is, is there anything in there that relates to financial, you know, spending of money that is not in the budget that we as a council approve?
It's all budgeted. The one, the change order, I don't wanna say that they're not budgeted, but the change orders do authorize additional expenditures, but the project budget is generally approved. But I think that's correct. Everything in there is approved in the coming budget.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's what my assumption is. So I just wanted to verify that.
Yeah, that's correct.
So I have a follow-up question then. All the change orders were also budgeted too?
No, what I'm saying, no, there's a budget for the project. So let's take Denton Tap and Parkway. We've said all since the very beginning of the project, because you all, the council, said you wanted to have the wider path between Hertz and Denton Tap. We knew there was gonna be a change order, so that's why it's coming to you as a change order. From a budget standpoint, the project budget is an improved project budget. We have funds. Jamie, I mean, you know, we have funds to pay for the project.
Okay. One of the question I had was going to, I guess, for example, E, the plantation mossy oak change order. I understand we have possibly budgeted the amount, or it's coming under 10%, 15% of the cost of engineer cost of the total amount, which is $5.4 million? But we're talking about four change orders that equates to 32% of the initial.
This is a project that started in 2016. And then when they start doing the design, as explained in the memo, there were changes that were happening along the way over the last five years. And so by statute, I can approve up to 25% of any change orders.
My question was not whether we could approve. It's just that, it just seems, something doesn't seem right that we're actually, the change orders are costing one-third of the cost, initial cost of having that plantation mossy oak project with the bid. I mean, we initially, that cost was about $225,000. Now, the change order equates to $106,000, where that's 32% of the initial cost of the $325,000. I'm just saying that's a substantial change order throughout.
Right, but there were those kind of changes throughout the project. I mean, I value your opinion, but it's the reality of the cost of the project has continued to increase from 2016 to what it's now. When it was budgeted and identified in 2016, it was an X project. Today, it's a different project.
This is actually not just the construction itself, but I think it's also, what is it, from the, let me just make sure. The ripcon, ripcon? No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say you said E. So if you're gonna talk about a different project, I need to know that.
Sorry, that was a different one. Dawson, is it?
Pete Dawson was E. That's the one we were talking about.
Right.
And no, none of these questions were asked in advance.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
I'm asking now.
No, I know.
Okay. So Pete Dawson.
I'll let Ken handle the question.
Okay, Pete Dawson, what were they hired for?
They're the design engineer.
Okay, design engineer. We had a design that we paid in $225,600 initially. That changed four times over the four, I guess, the last, whatever, five years.
Five years.
The scope of the project changed with all of those change orders. So each of the changes to the project acquired new design effort. Part of it was, there was a flood study involved. And so anytime we change the scope, we get new plans or change to plans. So there's a change in scope. In this case, because of the type of project, we expect Pete Dawson to be on-site more than what was originally anticipated. So the additional time, the additional site visits, combined with the length of time since the original, since they originally quoted or provided pricing for this project, those equate to this $38,500 fourth change order.
And that's just a change order from the engineer perspective, right?
Correct. And that's all we're talking about.
So what is the cost with this change order? What is the additional cost that we're gonna incur for the project itself?
There's no additional cost.
There's no.
No, this is just additional effort for Pete Dawson to provide the construction phase services that we need them to provide above and beyond what was originally scoped for the project. Again, because the project has expanded in scope over time, we need them on-site more than we originally anticipated. So this is really just the construction phase.
Okay, so as far as the change order was, it's just the cost to Pete Dawson, but not the construction cost itself?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on agenda items tonight?
All right, let's move on.
Kevin? Quick question. I'm assuming we're gonna break in four minutes to go to regular session?
Yes.
So my question is.
Not quite four, but.
Of course. But are we gonna have enough time to discuss the updated social media policy before we vote on it? That is my question.
We're gonna defer that to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So when you have your agenda this evening, you'll either pull that item.
Which is the last one, I think, R.
Because we do wanna have discussion on it, but we're not, we don't have time to do that before the meeting. The one item that we do have time to discuss is the discussion regarding the temporary signage. Mindy?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Council. We are back tonight to talk to you once again about the temporary sign ordinance. Again, just a little reminder about the history. Due to COVID-19, when the businesses were restricted on their hours or their service offerings, we did do several things to help them. And one of those things was to relax our restrictions on the use of temporary signs. Okay.
Wasn't me.
Okay, it was the, I'll blame this. So what the city council did is they did pass an ordinance that placed a moratorium on enforcement of certain sections of Chapter 6, Article 6-15, which does restrict use of on-premise temporary signs. So I'm gonna show you two slides now that have some examples of temporary signs that have been used in council, I'm sorry, in the city over the last 18 months. So there are some signs, and there are some additional signs. So you've seen those throughout the 18-month period, different variations of that. So our original ordinance that was passed was set to expire on December 31st of 2020. We've extended that ordinance, and now our current ordinance is set to expire on September 30th of 2021. As requested, last time we talked about this, we did create a simple, short bit survey for the businesses to fill out. We emailed it directly to all of the restaurants in town because they were primary, they were kind of our heaviest users of the moratorium on the temporary signs. So we sent it directly to them, and then we also utilized the chamber to send it out to their membership. So out of all of that, we actually only had 23 that responded to the survey. But one of the questions we asked was, would the addition of banners, if we would allow the additional use of banners throughout the year, would that provide the same benefit that some of these other temporary signs have provided? And 19 of the 23 respondents believe that the use of additional banners throughout the year would provide the same benefit. Just to give you a little bit of information about our current banner ordinance, we allow five banners per year. Grand opening banners are permitted for 45 days. All other banners are permitted for 14 days. There is a requirement that there must be 15 days between each permitted banner. And banners shall not exceed 40 square feet in size. They must be attached to posts or a building and must be secured not to flap in the wind. And they must be on the applicant's property unless they receive permission from another property owner to utilize their space. So with that, we're seeking direction tonight on what our next steps are. Again, our current ordinance will, our current moratorium will expire on September 30th. So some potential options, we can provide an additional extension on the current ordinance that would place a moratorium on enforcement for a little bit longer. We can revise the existing temporary sign ordinance to allow businesses to have additional banners each year, or we could just allow this to expire and go back to the pre-COVID regulations. So with that, I'm just looking for direction.
Brianna?
Good question. Can you go back on the 19 respondents?
Sure.
When they say believe additional banners provide the same benefit, the same benefit as what they've been receiving?
From the moratorium on the enforcement of temporary signs. Thank you.
John? If, how many more could you even allow? Based on those timeframes, you could only get a couple of more in during the year. Did I do the math right on that?
Again, the grand opening banner is really only the first time, the first banner. So most businesses at five, they'll have them for 14 days. So we could allow up to 10, probably.
But if.
There's 15 day.
Fifteen day between them, though.
Yes.
So that's 29 months. That's 29 days, so that's about a month.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
You basically got five months.
So you can average the number of banners, which.
Yes.
I will, I'll also mention that we have been really fortunate that really all we've seen are the signs that I've shown you, which are the bandit signs, the feather signs. We have had two requests now for the blow-up gorilla and a blow-up hot air balloon. So today, with the relaxed, the moratorium on enforcement, those would be allowed. So by allowing the additional banners, we could have a little more control.
Kevin?
As someone who owns commercial property on Denton Tap and runs his business out of it, I, I think we need to let the moratorium expire. I think that it, our city looks a certain way. We have a beautiful city. The reason why I appreciate the current ordinance that we have is that there's a requirement that they have to be the two weeks down in between. A lot of these signs, as you showed earlier, are in disrepair. They are not taught so, because they put them out and they just, they set it and forget it, basically. With that, with that cycle that we have, with our current system, or with our sign ordinance, requires them to take them down and then set them back up, secure them, you know, if they go back up. So I think some of that, we need to get back to that. I'm not a big fan of a certain slide on there covering up their monument sign with a banner. Like, I just think that there are some, you know, there's an aesthetic there in this community. As we've talked about in other discussions, you know, I came from a place that didn't have the tightest regulations on signs and stuff. And I think Capella residents expect a certain level of setting quality. And I think it's time that we move away from the temporary, you know, the allowing whatever, and we get back to what we're doing. Now, in addition to that, I would be willing to entertain, maybe looking at the ordinance and seeing one other types of signs. Like, I know that there are feather signs that wouldn't currently be allowed under our thing, but discussions on those types of things on a temporary basis.
So our challenge today is we've got two days before the current moratorium is lifted. So it's very fair to ask Mindy to go take a look at those other things, but we've got a pressing.
Just wanna put that out there in the universe.
Understood.
I would say let it expire, and then we can address the other later on.
Brianna?
And I'm on the same line. That's why I wanna understand what were those 19 responses, but all that to say is I think it's time to get back to what our ordinance provides.
So in fairness, what I would tell you, by allowing it to expire, we will send out a letter to the businesses today, so we would not begin enforcing the temporary signs probably for 30 days. We would, so that way we give them notice. We may have time then to come back and discuss some of the other.
Mark, I know you were strong proponent of extending this the last time around.
Yeah, I think we should extend it through the end of the year and do everything we can to help our businesses. I do think that there's, there's some overkill going on in some places where you see multiple signs of the same company. I mean, I think one sign is fine. And I think they've taken advantage of the generosity, but I don't know how that ordinance was this. If it only said one sign or.
It basically took away all regulations.
Brianna?
And Mark, I hear you, because I definitely wanna be there for our businesses, but with the, I guess where I'm coming from is it would expire September, I mean, it would expire September 30th, right? And then they give them 30 days, so that's the end of October. So we're only talking November and December. And so I guess I feel like with everything kinda getting back, people now know what's open and not open, where we didn't know before, where they were saying, right, like, drive-through only, or they were, you can come in, or whatever it may be, so.
Well, we're caught in holiday spirit. Caught in holiday spirit.
Well, and Mark, you know, I definitely don't wanna come across as unsympathetic to our business community, but, you know, the one thing I'm seeing now is not necessarily advertising for their business to come in and shop. It's, it's like now hiring signs are all over the place. And we, I understand the challenges in our workforce and stuff, but as you said, when, when there's about 30 signs in a 15-foot run, to me, that's abuse. And that way, by letting it expire, you know, and you do have that runway of 30 days, so, you know, to kind of get back to that. You know, you do curb some of that, hopefully, and, you know, but I think the initial spirit and intent is not quite being observed as it was intended.
And then for clarification, sorry, if we were to extend it, just so that I know kind of the pros and cons, if we were to extend it, those requests that you're talking about, we would have to approve, which would be hot air balloons and a large monkey somewhere, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. Then I'm not, I'm not okay with that, yeah.
So.
A gorilla, sorry.
We don't have a, I don't have a clear consensus here, so what's our, what's our feeling? Cliff?
I'll probably talk to the chamber about this. I don't know that the city's done that. And see if we can't do a little pushback, work it out against these socialists. Didn't want to shut down all the businesses going down. Anyway, obviously, I mean, that's just me. I mean, I would volunteer to do that. So when it be in 30 days, we'll have a better clarification of how strong they really are about. Because I don't know if they participate in that. You know, you said they were only 23. And that sounds a little low. So of course, it was low all the way through.
Again.
They didn't even want money, so.
We did email it directly to the heavy users of the, that used the temporary signs, and then allowed the chamber to send it out to all of their membership, to all of their email distribution. So traditionally, we just don't have a large response on surveys, so.
John, you got strong views one way or the other?
I'm with Mark and Cliff with allowing them to go through throughout the year.
Biju?
To help the business, I would extend through December 31st.
All right, so I'm hearing a consensus to extend out through the end of the year. Don?
Can I ask what the metric is, or what the, what the metric is to let it expire beyond, I mean, is there, is there something we're watching for, or is there some, like, what's, when we get to 12/31, what's gonna let it expire then, I guess, is sort of my thought. What are we, what are we watching for?
One of the things I will caution you about, we let you do this because of COVID and the emergency orders. The governor's order is gone, the mayoral order is gone, and the county is gone. So your justification for doing it is different.
That's, I guess what I want some clarity on is when is the justification for letting it expire?
There's more restriction on businesses that I know. I don't think. I thought it was counting. I mean, he's got an order, but it doesn't affect whether you're open or not.
And then your city just looks trash.
The justification for doing this, otherwise, you're not enforcing your written ordinance. If you wanna repeal it, by all means do so. And you wanna change it, by all means do so. But if you're, what we did is create a moratorium. So now you gotta be careful. There has to be a justification, an underlying reason. Otherwise, it's arbitrary and capricious. You know his lawyer.
Well, I mean.
It's arbitrary and capricious regulations, so.
Kevin?
To remind everybody of the 800-pound gorilla in the room, they're talking about putting a giant inflatable gorilla somewhere in our city. And I don't think that that reflects what Capella looks like. I think that there is a difference between helping businesses that are in need and enabling excessive sign use, which, and to be very honest, that we, you know, there are signs that are faded due to the sun, there are signs in disrepair, they just get allowed to stay out there. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that those signs are maintained properly. And we do that through a, through the enforcement of our ordinance.
Last one, Brianna?
Sorry, just real quick. If this is gonna go forward, because it's a 4-3, and it is what it is, that's fine. Then if these people are gonna put up a hot air balloon and a giant gorilla, knowing what those cost, there is a huge cost involved in that. So they need to know that after December 31st, they can't have that up. And so before they invest, let them know, I presume, that we need to let them know that.
And, but I don't know, how, how do you go from a sign to an inflatable balloon?
Because it's allowed.
So everything's suspended.
What we relaxed, yes, what we relaxed allows all of, all of those things that we, that previously we did not allow.
I thought we just allowed additional signage.
No, sir.
They're all branded signs. They're not all temporary signs, because then we'll start picking and choosing. You get this, you get that. We had to get, we had to do something quickly. So part of it was just to relax the standards during COVID.
Come to the dark side, Mark.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think if you do it one more time, there's been enough gone on in the last 30 days that you're probably okay, but you just can't do this forever. Well, as long as the CDC's involved in the thing, it's gonna change, you know, about every two weeks, and so.
I don't, I have no comment. I don't think we have a volume problem, you know, like we, I mean, I don't think we have, like, people aren't restricted from businesses. It's like, to me, it's excessive abuse signs. I'm sorry.
So maybe, I guess my question, though, is, are we saying that the consensus is to extend, and then that's it? Or are we revisiting it again? Because I guess that's my other thing.
So ended in three?
I wanna know that you guys are good with end of year and then 30 days.
Yeah, but.
No, either you have sent a letter on December 1st, and if it's continuing on December 31st, completely.
All right. So let's, I wanna hear this. So the way I understand it is that we will extend it for another 90 days to the December 31st, and at that point, there will be no more moratorium.
Whatever they say, because I'm not in favor of any of this.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would, if we're gonna extend, I would say 30 days at a time at this point, because it's.
Okay, I'll tell you what. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna recess our work session at 7:42. We will convene into regular session of the city council, and we will meet after the council to, for the other two items.
But you have to come back. Oh, does she have to come back?
We have tomorrow.
That one, I thought that was.
I was trying to make sure Mindy didn't have a crowd.
We'll get this.
So.
More party minutes on you.
Okay, I didn't get a vote, though, so let's, I'm sorry. Let's not, what's that?
We're not voting.
Well, I'm sorry, and consensus. If, if everyone's okay with the way I stated it, give me a thumbs up. That's a 90-day extension, at which point, Mindy will send out notes on December.
Now, we'll have to bring back an ordinance. So it'll be in the, you're correct to say what we're gonna do, but we have to come back to you, and you will have a vote out in the big room.
Here's what we've done, so it's clear. We have not changed the ordinance. There's really a moratorium on the enforcement, so we will not write a ticket. All those signs up are in violation of the ordinance. All we're not gonna do is we're not gonna write you a ticket. That's all we've done. We haven't changed the sign. It's a moratorium on enforcement.
And we're gonna extend that for 90 days for the last time.
Not a change of the ordinance.
Okay, that is correct.
All in favor of that one?
Do we need to send a letter to each customer?
On December 1st, we will send out a letter that says after, after December 31st, you will receive a citation.
Yes, Mark, yes, Biju, yes, Brianna, no, Don, no, Kevin, no. We do have a, we have a majority on that. Sorry for the short delay. We're still collecting council members. We'll be back in session in about three minutes. Councilmember Long. You have the proclamations?
They are down at defense.
Okay, thank you.
Howdy, everyone. Today is Tuesday, September 28th, the time is 7:50 PM. We have recess from work session, and we are moving into the regular session of the Capel City Council. We do have a, a citizen's appearance tonight, and, and during our public hearings, please sign in, register outside, and Ashley will provide me the list. Our invocation tonight is gonna be given by Councilmember Don Carroll, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please rise?
Let's pray. Father, we just take this moment to thank you for this community that you have created, that you have placed us in. We thank you for the leaders and the citizens and all that participate within our community. And tonight at this meeting, Father, we just ask that there will be peace and calm over this, over these chambers, and that wisdom will prevail as items are discussed and debated for the betterment of our community. We just ask all this through him. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Item number six is citizen's appearance. We have nobody that has signed up, however, invitation is open for any citizen that wishes to speak. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak during our citizen's appearance? Keeping in mind that we do have a public hearing later that will be called separately. Move to item number seven, our proclamations. Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual campaign to increase awareness of the disease, and whereas this year more than 276,000 women and 2,700 men will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, and whereas this year more than 42,000 will likely die from this terrible disease, and whereas deaths from breast cancer have declined over time, it still remains the second most common form of cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer death over American women, and whereas increased awareness, especially a family history and other common risk factors, preventative care, and regular screenings, including mammograms, can help save lives through early diagnosis and prompt treatment. And whereas through early detection and improved treatments, today there is a 90% chance for a five-year survival rate for women diagnosed with breast cancer. Therefore, I, West Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this 28th day of September 2021. I'd invite the, I really thought this was interesting. I was trying to get the Pink Souls in motion. I thought we had a lady named Pink Souls, and I apologize for that. But if you, you ladies would like to come down and join me, and Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, you might want to come down as well?
I was gonna do the proclam, or make the motion.
I was gonna let you say something first.
Thank you. And then I, and then I can do my motion, and then you want to let them-
You can say something.
Okay. First of all, thank y'all so much for being here. I totally forgot to wear my pink. It was one of those things that I thought, is it today, is it not today? But I just wanted to say thank you for everything that y'all do, and thank you for continuing to recognize October as our Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and going out there and being advocates for breast cancer awareness. So with that said-
Counsel, for your consideration.
Thank you. As an eight-year breast cancer survivor myself, thank you. I move to approve a proclamation naming the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and authorizing the mayor to sign.
You have a second by Councilmember Nevils. All in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carol, Nevils, John, Matthew Hill, in favor? None opposed, motion carries.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
I do.
What?
First of all, I want to say, whoever did your research, it's on point. I looked at the same research this morning, and it's interesting because one of the statistics that's still true from when we started 16 years ago, one out of eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer. That hasn't changed, so there's, it's just the fact. But what has changed is the outcomes, and the fact that it's caught earlier. So the chance of five-year survival rate now, it can be 10 years and further out. And I, my sister and I started Pink Souls in Motion. I promise, I'm not gonna go long. But we started it when our mother, who was 75, was diagnosed with breast cancer. And we were like, no, no, we have no breast, we have no cancer in our family. We're like, really? And I'm here to tell you, she had regular mammograms, it was caught early, and she is going to be 93 in two months, so. And so that's where the passion came. And with that, we are still fighting the fight. So thank you, we're honored, for the proclamation.
And I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. How many of y'all are going to San Diego to walk? Yeah, that, yeah, that's my plan, yeah. And, and I say that because no matter what walk you do at any part of the country, these women are there representing not just breast cancer survivors, for their, their friends, for their family, our community, I think our fire department for being such a huge advocate for us in this, in this area. But you always find Pink Souls in Motion, no matter where you go, and they do so much to raise funds, to continue the fight for those who are continuing to fight, and for those who have lost their lives due to this horrible disease. So thank you to each and every one of you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you very much.
I have one more thing.
I'm gonna give you this, so.
Okay, and then I won't say anymore. I do want to mention that one of our survivors had such a passion for helping raise funds. And one of the things she did every year was come to the proclamation. And she loved to come and then go over to the firehouse, and her name was Michelle. And Michelle, after we think it was six years, her breast cancer came back, and we lost her in the spring. And so now we have a program that's called Michelle's Gift of Hope, where we are now raising funds and helping local folks who are in treatment, currently, currently in treatment. So I wanted to mention that. We are here and honoring her.
And I promise, that's it.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, and, and, you know, just doing the, the awareness has done so much, and my, you know, my families have been impacted, so we really appreciate you coming out.
Thank you so much.
Okay, counsel, for your consideration. Whereas fire, oh, before we do that, Gina, can you come on down, and, and, I'm not sure, Kevin? I didn't know who all was coming down, like the pink shirt.
Sure, thank you.
Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas fire, home fires kill over 2,700 people, and fire departments respond to over 300,000 home fires annually. And whereas working smoke alarms alert you to a danger in the event of fire, in which you have, may have in as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Month theme is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, that serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore, I, West Mays, Mayor of the Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Capel to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Month 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Capel's Fire and Emergency Services. In witness, therefore, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this 28th day of September 2021. I gotta admit, I, this is, you know, when I was reading through the proclamation, I realized that my fire alarm set off four different sounds, and I have no idea what they mean, so. Kevin?
Well, good evening. My name is Kevin Richardson, I have the honor of serving as the fire chief, and I would just first like to say thank you for having us this evening to recognize this proclamation. Once a year, Fire Prevention Week, which is now Fire Prevention Month. And the way this whole thing started was back in the late 1800s, the city of Chicago pretty much burned down, and a lot of lives were lost, and, and the entire city had been devastated. And at the one-year anniversary of that fire, of course, they had memorial service and some other stuff, but they also took time to start an education campaign, because they knew that they could not allow that to happen again. And so since that time, pushing 130 years now, Fire Prevention Week is celebrated throughout the United States as an opportunity to focus on prevention. And so over time, what's happened is it's become 365. Our, our fire prevention efforts are year, year-round. We have, but we want to take time during this month, which is a month now, to focus as a nation on one consistent message. And so what I'd like to do is introduce our Life Safety Park Manager, Gina Lynn Tieri. She's gonna go over some of the activities and events, and share with you what they're doing at Life Safety Park.
Thank you. Good evening, counsel and mayor, thank you for having us here today. Like Chief said, I'm the manager at Life Safety Park, and we do safety education year-round, but we are really, during the month of October, we do an extra focus on whatever the theme is for that year. So like the proclamation said, it's Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. So we're putting an extra focus on those smoke alarms and how they can save lives. So within the month of October, we will be having ISDs and daycares and private schools and other organizations out to Life Safety Park, and we will be pushing our regular life safety messages, as well as the, the theme from NFPA for Learning the Sounds of Fire Safety. So we also have a virtual classroom. So if we understand that during this pandemic, some, some, you know, classes or citizens aren't able to come visit us, so we push that virtual classroom out, so they can still have that connection through our website and learn the same messages that we're putting out. We also will be delivering over 2,300 goodie bags to the elementary schools during the month of October for students in K through second grade. It will, they're, I say goodie bags, but they're information packets, so that will have the information of the, that the NFP puts out, and then some additional fire and life safety items. We also are gonna be pushing a lot of information on our social media site, so if you're not following us, please do follow us. And if you look in front of you, there is a Tumblr with some information in it. Inside there is the pamphlet that we will be giving to all the schools that go in the information packets. That's what is put out from NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association. So if you would like to take a look at that, we encourage the, the council and all citizens to take the month of October to discuss the importance of smoke alarms and having a fire escape plan with your family.
And I'd be willing to bet one of the sounds means you have a low battery.
And that's the one that makes my dogs go craziest. Yes, counsel, for your consideration. Councilmember Carroll?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the proclamation naming the month of October as Fire Prevention Month, and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second by Mayor Protem Hinoza Smith. All in favor?
Long, Hinoza Smith, Carol, Nevils, John, Matthew Hill, in favor? None opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. You know, we really appreciate all the services that you guys provide and the safety that you provide for the city. And that, that one's mine, so that's okay. I've got glasses here for you. But, you know, you, the, you guys do provide invaluable services for us, and we certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have Officer Cochran to come down, please? And anyone else associated here? Could I just ask for the entire department to come down? Counsel, for your consideration. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring the 37th Annual Edition of an important nationwide crime and drug prevention event on October 5th, 2021, called National Night Out. And whereas the national, annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Capel to join forces with thousands of other communities across the state in promoting the cooperative police and community drug prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Capel is celebrating our 30th anniversary of National Night Out in the great crime prevention program. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Capel be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our town. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood awareness and safety, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the National Crime Watch plays a vital part in assisting the Capel Police Department through crime prevention efforts in Capel. Department through crime prevention efforts in Capel. Now therefore, I West Mays Mayor of the City of Capel do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 5th, as National Night Out. In witness thereof, I've set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this 28th day of September 2021. The only thing I would have added there is National Night Out is also the way that I learned to meet all of our neighbors when we first moved into town. And I absolutely contribute or attribute the National Night Out for us calling this home now. So, it's just been a wonderful event. Counsel, for your consideration. Councilmember Neves?
I move that we approve Agenda Item 9, approving a proclamation naming National Night Out on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Councilmember Hill, second. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa-Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Sammy?
You look like you were ready to talk.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. National Night Out is, it's a big thing, and it's very important for us. It's, it's an opportunity for the police and the community to come together, to share stories, to work together, to protect each other, and most importantly, to share food. So, so please, go out and meet your neighbors. We have about 70 block parties that we're gonna attend, first responders are gonna attend, so please come out, be safe.
Can you talk about how we've done in the past nationally, state?
In the past, we've done, I don't know all the details, but last year, or the year before, we've got first place. Is that right? First place in our size city. The year before, we got fourth place. So we're always in the top five since I've been here. I've been here about 20 years. So we always do a great, we always have a great show of the community and first responders coming together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I want to take an opportunity to thank all our officers and just putting this together every single year. I know it takes a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of coordination, and y'all do a phenomenal job. And it's not just about, you know, putting together events, but it's the fact of just going out and promoting safety and getting to know your neighbors, and that's how we, you know, help each other out, right? Building community. We're all about building community. But so our fire department, our police department, everybody comes out, everybody visits, you know, everybody gets a visit to all the different block parties from our police and our fire and our council members and our mayor and our city staff. And so I do, like, today I had something on my door saying, you know, this is the party that we're having, and it was great to see new neighbors from the past having a get-together. But all that to say is I really encourage everyone to take the time to get out, breathe some fresh air, and even if you meet one new neighbor, that's one more person that you get to know in your community and to build, to build safety and camaraderie with others. So, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you. And I'd like to take the opportunity to publicly acknowledge Officer Cochran and Officer Paul Gonzalez, who's not here tonight, for all the work they do for this. They do it by themselves and they do a great job.
Thank you very much.
And do the fire and the police still have their basketball game that y'all used to do? Or y'all did it, y'all had like a competition against each other?
Did that regularly. Uh, regularly.
Other, okay. I was just promoting some competition.
Item number 10 is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in one motion. These items have been previously approved through budget or past council action. Any item considered separately, full descriptions are available on the screen. We will be removing item number R, which is a review of the social media policy and review it at our next meeting in October. Counsel, do I have a motion? Councilmember Matthew?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on item number C, on the lights. Do I ask Mike or I see Sunday he has special events coordinator?
So, did, was the question, did you?
I just have a question. I don't need to pull it out from the items.
All right. Go ahead.
Please, it says to approve $179,000, but when I look at the contract, it says 147. Can you explain the difference?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Yes, we've added several buildings. The new contract should say, oh, if you look at the bottom of that, it says 147, which was what the original one was, and then we've added several facilities and other displays so that the bottom will be the total of the 179.
Is it on the same contract or a different?
Correct. Originally, in the contract, it was 147,000, but we've built a couple of facilities and had to add them to that. So if you look at the contract below that, on the same contract, it'll say in addition, and it'll list the new buildings and the new displays, and then at the very bottom of the contract, it gives the current total of 179,000.
Okay, just out of curiosity, how much did we spend last year?
It's difference from last year with the addition of three more facilities that we've built and opened since then. And also, we've done some more, more displays for the parks and the photo ops and, and just in general with the, we've added some to Old Town to try and help attract with business down there.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I just have a question for Mike. I see the sign, contract is signed, so do we need a council approval before we sign the contract or not?
The provisions in the contract allow, you're approving, if I understand your question correctly, you're approving the cost of $179,000 tonight. So I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question. We have a contract, and in the contract, it makes provision for the continuation of the contract as far as the terms. So yes, the council has to, that's what, that's why it's on the agenda.
No, I see the contract signed by you on the 26th.
I believe the contract you're looking at was the original one. That was the, when you originally signed the, the contract was a two-year agreement with the option of three renewals.
Okay. That I didn't know.
And this is the first renewal.
Okay. All right, thank you. That clarifies. Thank you.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a follow-up question. So I know that the, the new amount, it actually goes to, what, 179,520? And from the 149 to 147 to 149, it was the added, I guess, the services, additional costs for the additional lighting. Were the other proposals also based on the additional also? And they actually provided the lower amount? Or was it that they did not include this, these additional services that's provided in the bids?
No, the additional services are for facilities that we have just opened in the city, such as Fire Station 4 and the new office at the Roaming Oaks. And also, we're transitioning from the Parks Department having a separate contract to one master contract under facilities. So some of that is additional stuff that we're adding into Andy Brown East. That it's now, it would have been under Parks and it's now under, under facilities.
Okay, maybe I didn't ask the right way. On the proposal, holiday light proposal from the premier, it shows that we had added services from 2020 to 2021, which amounts to about, I guess, a difference from 179,520 to 147, 085. And I think that's what Councilmember Matthew was talking about from 147,085 is the, on the bid tabs?
Correct. Last year was, was the 147, and then this year with the addition of the additional facilities and the fact that adding to the facilities contract is some of the stuff that was previously under Parks has raised the to, to the 180 amount. If there was a lower amount, that was, the previous year before that, we've added, we've added like, there was a bridge on Sandy Lake that was not on the original contract that we added. We added the, some of the lighting, additional lighting on it at Old Town, just other small things that we've added as, as we've seen that we've needed to do.
Sure. So my question was, on the bid tabs with the premier lighting, certified lights, and all the other Murphy and so and so and so, they had that, we had the bid tabs. Are there other bids, other company, other than premier, are they based on the inclusion of the 2020, 2021 additional lightings that the premier had added on?
No, that, their bids were bid, this is, this is the first renewal. This is our third year with this contract. Their bids were initially, when they, before all this was added on this, and they were bidding the same as premier bid at that time.
Okay, so there wasn't included. Okay.
Yeah, they were completely straight across the board, all the same items.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question. Question, so you said this is a continuation for three years?
This is year three. The original contract was a two-year contract with the option of three renewals. This would be renewal one after the, after the first two years.
Did we get a bid from this year from other companies?
No, we were just exercising the option of the first renewal.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Mayor Protem Hinojosa-Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through Q.
Seconded by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa-Smith, Carroll, Neves, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The end of the consent agenda. We're on to item number 11. And Mr. Steer, if you would read the item into the agenda, this is a continued public hearing from last session on February, or September 14th. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Good evening. This is to consider approval of PD 213 R6H Live Work Lost Creek Edition Lot 27 Block 1, zoning change request from PD 213 R2H to PD 213 R6H to attach a detailed site plan for five, two-story, 4,500 square foot live work buildings and a common parking area on .71 acres of property located at the northeast corner of South Capel Road and Heath Lane at the request of Chris Collins being represented by Greg Frink, GPF Architects LLC. As mentioned, this property is located at the northeast corner of Heath and Capel Road. This request was continued from the September 14th City Council hearing, and City Council asked the applicant to reduce the density of the proposal, work with staff in the neighborhoods, or staff and the neighbors to address their concerns, and bring the case back for reconsiderate, or for consideration. In this revised proposal, the applicant's made several changes to the site plan and reduced the lot coverage by reducing the size of each of the units. However, the reduction in density was not feasible, according to the applicant. The applicants met with the neighbors and received some positive reactions to the proposed changes, which we'll go through with you this evening. Before we get into the proposed changes, let me go through a little history, or a little surrounding. Here's a map of the densities of this proposal and the surrounding live work units, townhomes, and patio homes, which was included in the council packet for, for your reference. In this map, you can see the density of the project in relation to the other live work units. This is the lowest of the three live work developments at 7.1 units per acre. The Robertson Live Work Project at McNear and Capel Road is slightly more dense, and the Lost Creek Project is noticeably more dense. I've included the density of the townhome and patio home projects without the driveway and flood plan included for comparison purposes. This project would appear less dense than those projects as well. Okay, so before we get started with the revisions since counsel, let me remind you of the revisions already made at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. First, they agreed to no more than one medical office in the development due to parking concerns, and medical office is a high parking generator. Second is they deleted the southernmost parking space originally proposed due to visibility concerns raised at the meeting. They put a condition on the planned development eliminating the possibility of the uses spilling over into the garage, and they addressed a concern raised at the second-story patios being able to view the adjacent properties to the east. They put together a screening requirement to screen the view from those patios. So now let's look at the comparison. The revised site plans on the, on the right, and this was, like I said, the density is the same as the original proposal, but the, the lot coverage is different. The applicant reduced the proposed units in width and length. Previously, the footprint was 26 by 89. Now it's 25 by 79. The air conditioning area of the first floor has been reduced from 1,500 to 1,200 square feet, and the plan indicates that there's an overhang of the second floor over the driveway and parking. And the revised elevations were resubmitted today, and I've included it on the elevation slide here coming up. The previously proposed stacking, parking configuration behind the garages was modified. The revised plans show the proposed public parking to be offset from the garage parking to allow for better functionality. You can see that outlined in red. This parking is also to be shared amongst the residents, whereas before, the parking directly behind the units was controlled by the private property owner. The property will still have the two additional private spaces behind their units in the driveway like a typical residence would. The drive aisle leading into the property off of Heath Lane is now setback from the eastern property line by the required 10 feet, and landscaping is proposed for this area. Revised landscape plan hasn't been submitted as of yet, but the applicant's indicated that he will plant five live oaks, evergreen landscaping in this area. Because each of the units have been reduced in, in width by one foot and shifted south, the five-foot setback variance for the proposed unit on the northern property line has been eliminated. The applicant's now proposing 10 feet, although there's a slight encroachment into the 10-foot perimeter on the northeast corner of the site. Staff's comfortable with this encroachment because it's tucked away at the rear and screened with a fence. The applicant's continuing with a request of a eight-foot board-on-board wood fence in lieu of the six-foot masonry wall. He's worked with the neighbors, and according to the applicant, two of the three abutting neighbors to the east of the project are in support of the eight-foot wooden fence. And according to the applicant, the third property that abuts this proposal roughly 30-foot, 30-foot wide, they didn't want to comment on, on the proposal. The neighbor on Heath that's most, most impacted sent a letter indicating that he was in support of the request with modifications made, and the applicant's agreed to remove their fences and install this eight-foot board-on-board fence with the trim cap and have the HOA maintain it in perpetuity. Let me hand out a letter. Required for the proposal was reduced based on the work square footage. With the revisions made, there's 33 parking spaces that are required, two required for the garage parking, one medical office would require seven spaces, and then... for the garage parking, one medical office would require seven spaces, and then four professional offices would require sixteen spaces. Therefore, there's thirty-three, uh, parking spaces required. The total number of provided parking spaces has not changed, with eleven on-street parking spaces and seven shared spaces in the northeast corner. However, the spaces have been reallocated behind the units to address the concerns brought up at council. Previously, there were three parking spaces behind each of the garages, open to the public, and there was some concern due about the functionality of these and the cars parked in the garages. Now there are five public spaces behind the garages and then, or offset from the garages, and ten private spaces directly behind the garage doors, uh, and that they'll remain for the private property owner to manage, and will require those to be signed as such. The elevations have been modified slightly to reflect the changes, and on the left with the S, you can see the southernmost, uh, building, that south elevation's been revised to show the rear overhang and added windows to the second floor, and the northernmost building, north elevation's showing the same. I've also included the rear elevation to show the added columns and overhang. We sent out thirty, thirty notices to surrounding property owners within two-hundred feet as required by state law, ninety-nine courtesy notices within eight-hundred feet. Originally, we received three written responses in opposition within the two-hundred-foot area. These originally had concerns with drainage, screening, safety, noise from the common area, and parking. We've received the two letters that I've handed out that have reversed their stance based on the modifications made, and they're now in favor of the proposal. One of the adjacent, uh, property owners to the east, and one from across Heath and a few houses down. The third letter that was originally in opposition was from the Old Capel Townhomes, uh, which has an X lot just north of this request. The applicant met with the HOA, and I spoke with Mr. Walker last week and Ms. Hamilton today, and they are in favor of the revised proposal. Originally, we had heard from eight properties within the eight-hundred-foot courtesy notification area who were concerned about parking, number of units proposed, and visibility at the intersection of South Capel Road. I spoke with Ms. Hamilton, who is representing the HOA, and they are in support of the revised, revised plans, and they represent seven of those, uh, those people in opposition, so. I sent Robert Larson an email earlier today. I haven't heard back from him, but he had some concerns about the visibility at the Capel Heath Road intersection. So that concludes, oh, actually, here's the, uh, recommendation slide, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the request, subject to the following PD conditions. There may be additional comments during the building permit and detailed engineering review. A replat will be required to subdivide the lots and provide easements. Submit a draft HOA document for the city attorney to review. These shall be filed with the plat. For an exception, be granted to allow an eight-foot wood fence in lieu of a six-foot brick wall on the eastern property line. This will be owned and maintained by the HOA. We deleted number five, uh, that allowed for the exception to the one-foot perimeter landscaping on east property line and five-foot on north property line. No more than one unit shall be a high parking generator. This includes uses such as medical and dental office and chiropractor, and the remaining uses shall be professional office. Garages shall only be used for the parking of vehicles, no workspace, and a screening of the second-floor patio area is required to reduce the sightlines to the adjacent residences to the east. And that concludes my presentation, and the applicant is in the audience, as well as some, some members, uh, that spoke, spoke about it, uh, last meeting.
Thank you very much. Do our applicants have anything that they'd like to add, or?
You guys want, want to load up the presentation?
Go ahead.
Yes, yes or no?
Greg Frinca, uh, Mayor West, uh, Council, Greg Frinca, GPF Architects, five-four-nine, East Sandy Lake Road, Capel. Matt covered everything, in my opinion, and I don't have anything to add.
I just wanted to say thank y'all all for your service. Thank you for the adjournment. Um, it gave me an opportunity to sit down and meet some of my neighbors and come up with a way to try to work this out peacefully, and, um, without you extending that opportunity, I don't know that we'd be where we're at today. I've got to meet my neighbors, and it's been awesome, so, thank you very much. Y'all have really shown me what the public servants that you are and how y'all handle what you're doing with this first time at this myself, so, just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and our next, uh, item of business is to, to listen to our, our citizens. We have two people that have signed up to speak. Uh, other persons wishing to speak may sign the register and list their residence of address. Uh, you're going to be called on to speak in the order that you signed up, and we will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Uh, the first person signed up to speak is Mr. Don Walker. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Mayor, council members, nice to be here. I've had many conversations.
Sir, your, your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Don Walker, five-twenty-two Mobley Way Court.
Thank you.
Uh, down the street from the proposed development. I've had a many chances, a number of chances, to talk to Mr. Chris Collins and, uh, Matthew Steer, and his, Mr. Steer's, uh, report is somewhat in, not quite in agreement with my feelings. We all in our Old Capel Townhomes neighborhood wanted fewer buildings. That's what we were hoping to be in agreement with. Uh, one of our neighbors who hasn't been here before said that the whole area was looking like New York tenements, uh, if you have an idea what that looks like. However, the density is in the purview of the chamber, the council, and none of my business. Mr. Collins has commendably worked on each of the concerns that we had. He made major improvements, I think to the appearance of the, uh, neighborhood entrance. I wish the diagrams were still there, but, um, and before, the look from Heath looked very tacky. You guys know that word? Good southern word. Now it, it looked like a long, skinny parking place, uh, more like an alley. Now he's got landscaping, he's widened it out, I commend him for that. He showed us that projects can be designed to fit the ordinances and not depend on major variances that would harm a neighborhood either in appearance or in value or in traffic overflow. So I have four points, I hope I can get it in. I think a project, number one, checkmark on every project should be traffic safety, um, or else, if an accident happens, for instance, at the intersection at McNear where that doesn't appear to happen, uh, been addressed, an accident there will point straight to the city, go from the city to the planning department, go from the planning department to the architect, because he's the one who should have known the rules, the builder should have known the rules, and I think the city already has those rules to tell us how to design an intersection. Anyway, that should be number one checkmark. Number two is no neighborhood harm shall come as far as appearance, uh, desirability or parking, and I recommend having a side, L view, side view elevation bring, brought to each presentation, so you can see what it looks like from the side, or going to look like from the side before it actually gets built. Number three, no stacked-in or block-me-in parking allowed except by the owner who gets two extra spaces for his or her cars or for visitors to his, for her establishment. This is actually a plus-five increase over the number of parking places he had last week, if, if you recall what those were. I think that works out really well because it's private, he can control it and do with it as he pleases instead of making it a variable, uh, open to anybody in the building project. And number last, last thing I'd like to see you do is insist that builders and, uh, architects and project people show up with a design that matches the ordinance, and if not, reject that design. Minor variation, variances are just fine, but to show up assuming that you're going to get ten feet of a setback and get rid of the, the, uh, what, the landscaping just doesn't seem right. It seemed like some effort should be taken to there. So, I, um, as far as the project, I have no valid complaints since Mr., um, Mr. Chris Collins has met all the requirements. Uh, I would prefer it to be different, and that's the only place that we disagree on, but I like what he's done as far as what he could do, so that's my thing.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
Next is Ms. Debbie Elliott. Ms. Elliott?
Please state your name and address for the record. It's Debbie Elliott, five-forty-two Mobley Way Court in Capel, and, uh, I spoke last time, and, uh, first I want to say I appreciate y'all letting us, uh, have this time to, for a second time in front of you, to, um, let you know our feelings and, and our experience. Those of us who are in the Old Town, uh, Old Capel Townhomes have gone through this before, and some of you, I know, were on the council at that time and were a great help to us in listening to our concerns and really understanding. I hope since the last time we, we spoke that you've had a chance to drive by the lot and see that and, uh, try to envision five homes and thirty-nine parking spaces on that one lot. Also, I, I was at the meeting, uh, that Mr. Collins had, and I so appreciated his time to, to meet with us and get to know us, and, and it was a pleasure to get to know him and love him having, uh, being in the neighborhood and having him as a neighbor, and nothing I'm, I'm going to say, I don't, I'm not, uh, against businesses, I'm very pro entrepreneurship and business and love the work-live idea, but once again, the, the modifications that he has made, although I know he spent a lot of time and, and effort in this, the, the two major issues were density and parking, and neither of those were really addressed. Uh, I was kind of excited when I heard he was, you know, playing around with some of the, you know, modifications and thinking, oh, man, he's, he's going to show us what four units would look like, and I can't wait to see that. But it was still at five units, so you've got five businesses, five families living there, and reducing the parking just exacerbated our concern, which is the overflow. So he's gone from thirty-nine parking places to thirty-three, I believe, uh, Mr. Steer's, uh, mentioned, and that just, you know, if successful businesses have overflow parking, it's going to overflow into the residents, and that was the concern. So I'm just reiterating that same point again, and, um, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else that's signed up?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, counsel, is there any discussion, any questions that you have for the applicants? Mayor Protem Hinojosa Smith.
Thank you. I actually have a question for Mr. Steer. Can you just walk me through the revisions to the parking? Because I know we had three parking spots behind the, the two car garages, so I was just trying to follow what the modifications are.
Yeah, here, yeah, I knew, I knew this was going to be a little confusing.
Yes.
So I tried to, tried to head it off, but, okay, so, so what, what you've got there on the revised site plan, um, what they did was, originally they had three parking spaces directly behind the garage doors. So they've offset one of those spaces to not be behind a garage door, and so that those are completely shared by the entire development. So those will be either in an easement or part of the X lot, so the completely shared, and then the two parking spaces that are in the driveway behind the garages, those are for private property owner uses, just like, just like your residence, right? So, uh, they reallocated the, the number of spaces, they didn't eliminate spaces. The thirty-three, uh, parking spaces were actually with the reduced footprint, they are required to have less parking spaces now, so they've, they've decreased the potential parking problems by reducing the, uh, square footage of the first floor workspace.
Gotcha. So parking behind the garage can still occur, it's supposed to be private?
Right.
And so, from a monitoring or enforcement standpoint, that has to be the private owner saying someone's in my spot, right?
Right, well, so what we're going to recommend is that they, they sign it as such, private parking, so they would coordinate with, you know, their, their family or whoever's utilizing those, those spaces.
Gotcha, okay. Um, and then I'll just make a quick comment, you know, Mr. Collins and Randy that I met recently, like, thank you both for taking the time to meet with the neighbors, and thank you for listening to the comments, and really appreciate y'all coming back and bringing forward something that was revised, um, for us to consider, so, wanted to say thank you. And Mr. Frinca.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, last time, the usage for downstairs for business was going to be requiring at least fifty percent? Was that, was that correct recollection, or minimum usage for, um, workspace wise?
For the workspace is, is, so, the minimum requirement would be eight-hundred square feet of that twelve-hundred square feet, or six, what is it? Six-hundred square feet of that twelve-hundred.
I was wondering whether it's still the fifty percent or whether it's...
It is, it is, fifty percent or greater needs to be.
Okay, right, minimum is fifty percent, though. This plan still doesn't provide any layout for upstairs, whether it's going to be a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, or, I don't know, I don't even know if it's possible, four-bedroom or whatever. Is that generally how we accept a plan?
Yeah, generally, we don't, don't even require, uh, floor plans for residential, it's just the, the building footprints for residential, and so, yeah, they're speculative, excuse me, so.
Okay. And then the second part is, I, I do appreciate Mr. Collins going back and, um, working with the residents and redrawing this, but now it seems that the spaces, even though the side, I guess the, the width is reduced one foot, theoretically, if all the cars are parked in the back, that also, I guess, kind of reduces easy access in case between the building if there is something?
The, no, well, so, well, so the, the actual footprints have been reduced, and then all the buildings shifted a foot south.
Right, but I mean...
So, so this, it's got the same width between the units.
The building itself it does, but you, you've added additional parking that are, I guess, shared, right? That some, that partially blocks the access point from the rear end.
Oh, but, but between the units, that, that's, that's just...
The, uh, the parking is three feet.
Just, just a minute.
I, I was just wondering if that's an issue with any fire code or anything, or if that's going to be any problem with...
Okay.
...for emergency.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, uh, there is a pedestrian door, if you look at the, the elevations here, the rear elevations, there's a, a pedestrian door next to the garage, you'd have your, your parking right behind that pedestrian door. So, let's see here, let's go back. So, are you, are you saying that to get out of that pedestrian door, you, you might have some...
I'm just wondering if the, if the emergency vehicle, if they happen to be there, that's going to be a problem, if all of, all of the parkings are full...
lane. So, that's 24-foot fire lane that extends up to probably past Building Five. You can't see it. There's a dash line there. But if, if you'd like, I can get the architect to address the building code.
So, and one final question was, you, you had mentioned earlier that reducing the, the number of building was not feasible, but in what sense is that not feasible?
That was pretty applicant. He, he had said that he can't reduce it and make the project work.
But, so, I'm just trying to understand, what, what do you mean by it's not going to work?
Is that okay?
Yes.
So, obviously, there's an economic factor in this development. And if, we've been asked several times about reducing the density down to four buildings. By doing that, the other question was, why don't you just build four larger buildings? The problem is the building code puts a block on the size of the building, up to 3,000 square foot of heat and air-conditioned space. Just the simple economics of this is going to require five lots to either be sold or five buildings to be built. Without it being economically feasible project, it can't get developed. We've addressed all the other issues that have come up. When I started this project in, I think the first numbers that we ran were in February. When we looked at density, density was the very first stop that we, we came up with two hard stops as we started this project, that meant this won't work. And so, when we met the first time in a pre-meeting, I can't remember the initial term of that meeting, we talked about the density. And when I had run the density numbers based on the units I lived in, which were least desirable feedback after they were built, came in. Is that a fair statement, Matt? The, the unit I live in, the complex, had the least desirable feedback of the visible. So, we agreed that I didn't like that either. I lived there. One of those three is mine. And so, the objective was to find out where would our density be? So, when we did the density per acre, we were less than where I was in the unit that I live in, and so that was a plus. Then when we looked at the coverage, the amount of acreage, the number of square feet covered by the footprint of the building, our density, once again, using a density ratio in the coverage, and I had supplied a set of those numbers to each of you through email, our coverage was less per square foot in a ratio format than any of the other three live-work projects, the proposed, the one I live in, and then the Robertson project. And the third density that we looked at was, what does it look like from the street? We're looking at a one-dimensional flat drawing without a three-dimensional building. And so, because of that, we measured the distance of the front of the building versus the total front, frontage of road frontage in front of the lot that it's built on. And when all of these numbers came out, we were less than the others. When all of those numbers were less and the question of density was brought up in February, we moved forward. And so, all of the density was addressed right off the bat because it just economically isn't feasible, especially with the variables of construction costs today in the future. It just didn't make sense to, to try to get four. It just didn't work economically. And so, that's why we stuck with five.
So, one final question is, they have addressed about the overflow of parking issues. Was, was that, how is that going to be addressed?
And so, so as we've talked about this, and we sat in my kitchen slash office talking with the neighbors about it, overflow parking happens every Super Bowl Sunday. Overflow parking happens every time Texas OU plays. It just is something that just has to be dealt with in a neighborhood. I believe that there is a single individual, I called it a conversation funnel, that every time we talk about my project, there's a chiropractor who bought a building north of me, his name comes up because he wouldn't work with the community. He wouldn't address the issues when he had events that brought several cars, and he wouldn't cooperate with the neighbors. But in your subdivision, I'm sure there's times somebody has a graduation party or homecoming, or somebody just brought a baby home from the hospital, and the next thing you know, there's cars parked everywhere. I don't believe in my actual living in a live-work with three buildings, less parking than we're providing in this situation. We can't park in front of our garages in my unit. We haven't actually experienced that in the over 12 months that I've lived at the corner of Heath and Capel Road. We just haven't. The bigger issue that we're running into on my end of the subdivision is commercial vehicle traffic, 18-wheelers pulling in. But we're dealing with that. Capel Police have responded every time we've had an illegally parked tractor-trailer. And if they're in other subdivisions, it's dealt the same way. So, I really, I believe that between the location and the density of the way McNear is a split drive with a marquee in the middle of the driveway, and with the attitude of a particular individual in that neighborhood, it's creating more fuss about something that really isn't a problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. One question was answered, I was going to ask the question about the four versus five units, but one of the things, it relates to the parking itself, is, as I read this, Mr. Collins has actually impacted his marketing efforts to address the parking situation by limiting the kinds of businesses that can be in four of the five units. I mean, that's, and that's something that he's been willing to do, and it has, it will have an impact on his ability to mark those, those, or market those five units. And so, he's done what he can physically do to address the parking situation, plus the fact of what he said, and it's all true. So, I think that, you know, that the spirit of cooperation runs through the potential parking issue that's been discussed.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mrs. Steer. So, the original proposal was 39 parking?
Correct. Yeah, 39 were required.
And today's 33 is required.
33 are required. They're still providing 43.
Okay. And two of them is behind the garage?
Correct.
And the two garage space, is it designated to the business downstairs or the resident upstairs? Or is it not?
So, we would leave that to the property owner to, to sign on, on the back.
The one, two behind the garage is what you are classifying as private?
Yes, sir.
So, that means the retail shop?
So, so it wouldn't be shared amongst the, the five different lots?
Okay.
So, these other five spaces in red, those would be shared amongst all, all the, the whole property, similar to the, the, what is it? Seven on the northeast corner and the 11 on Street.
And the, and the front parking is also shared by all of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Neville.
Mr. Collins, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much for bringing this project to us. I stayed pretty quiet this whole time, last time and this time, you know, just taking it all in. The big thing that stands out for me in this project is I appreciate you being willing to listen to your neighbors. I think if we had more of this, more of that type of attitude in this world, I think we'd be a lot better off. So, I appreciate you taking the two weeks and commend you on your efforts on that. Also, I think it speaks a lot to having someone who was in opposition two weeks ago come in and say, he didn't get everything he wanted, but he appreciated the efforts and noticed that you were being neighborly. So, that really stands out for me. I think this project would be a great addition to the Old Town area. So, I just want to say thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Steer, can I confirm one thing?
Yes, sir.
With you. So, all the changes or modifications that have happened, nothing needs to go back before P&amp;Z, right? P&amp;Z approved at 6-0, and that, that.
That's, that's correct.
That still stands, right? That's all correct. Okay. Mr. Collins and Mr. Frinca and the community, the neighborhood, I appreciate all the work that y'all have done to, to, to come to some agreement, looking, when I take a step back and try not to get as much in the weeds, because there have been a lot of good people with city and with the developer and with the neighborhood and with P&amp;Z that have already looked at this and blessed this to a great extent. So, when I take a step back, I have to, I have to think that this is going to be a viable use of this space that is currently vacant. The, the neighborhood has had some concessions. You have come back and you have given some concessions, I think more than once, first with P&amp;Z and now with council, and I appreciate that. So, I, I think this is a good opportunity and a good example of what we have in, in Capel to where the community really does work for the betterment of everyone. And it doesn't, everyone doesn't get always their complete wish list, and I know that is the case for the developer and the neighborhood alike, but I appreciate that you've been willing to work with everyone. When you look at the density compared to even some of the surrounding, whether it be the homes or either some of the other work-live spaces, I, I do think that your, your, your space appears to be slightly less dense. At the parking, you have tried to accommodate that. And I think even the landscape on the backside of the property, or the, the east side of the property there, I, I think that even helps just from a, an optics or a visual standpoint. So, I appreciate all the, the effort that you've put forth, and I appreciate all the effort that the neighborhood has, has put forth to let their voice be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor Protem Hinohosa Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a question for Mr. Steer. Mr. Steer, just, just thinking about the question Mr. Councilmember Matthew had, so that, maybe because it just confused me a little bit, but, and maybe this is for the applicant as well, but the intent would be that the owner of the business owned, is living in that same space, right? We're not talking about two different owners?
Correct. Yes. They can't, they can't be two separate owners.
Okay. Because I think the question was about who was going to use the parking spots in the back. So, I just wanted to make sure, because all of a sudden, you made me think about that. And then the other thing, which is clarification too, that the first floor can only be used for business.
Well, so.
Work. Is that right?
Well, so, more than 50% has to be used for work.
And it can be either upstairs or downstairs?
No, it has to be on the first floor.
Okay. So, more than 50%. So, the, so I presume, well, maybe that's a bad presumption, but.
So, so they can have residential on a portion of the first floor?
They can have residential on the portion of the first floor. Okay. Remind me what the square footage is for each?
So, it's 1,200 square foot for the first floor.
Okay.
Is, is what, what the air-conditioned space is, and then they've got their porches and garage.
Okay. So, the upstairs plus a portion of the downstairs can be used for residential?
Correct.
Thank you.
I had one note. I'm sorry.
Was this in response to Mayor Protem?
The parking, yes.
Go ahead.
The concept, living in one and working in one, that the first floor would only be, it has to be at least a 600 square foot for commercial. This would be somebody who would be an office accountant, maybe an architect, that just needs an office, but they're not running a business out of their home because they want to be able to have the visibility on the street. And so, then the rest of the space on the first floor could be used that way. Part of allowing the parking behind the garage to belong to the owner addresses, Councilman John, about what's the floor plan look like. So, if you have a larger family with the four kids, that now they have four parking places that are private for the homeowner, so that that works out that way.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that, because I, I will say, you know, like, from, from my standpoint, right, I was hoping for less density, right? So, that, that was what I was looking for. At the same time, though, the fact that there has been some concessions as far as, you know, making sure that the setbacks are now within, you know, our requirements, it's also, you know, smaller, smaller space overall. I work from home currently, and I know that our current environment has changed. So, all that to say, while I was looking for something, I was looking for lower density and looking at for four units, for example, you know, at the end of the day, I, I was just also looking for the opportunity for the collaboration amongst the neighbors and you as a business owner and, and the rest of your team coming to a resolution that was kind of a, a win-win in some way. So, that's why I just wanted to understand from a, a live-work perspective, what was the, what was the intent and the square footage that we were looking at. So, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the applicant for working so hard to kind of reduce the number of variances that are being requested, trying to conform as much as possible to the requirements of our zoning regulations, and working with the neighborhood and getting their feedback. That's crucial in, I think, getting a consensus here among council. And, you know, I, I hope that people continue to work this way with the neighborhoods, especially when they're asking for something that may not be in accepted use or additional variances. And Mr. Frinca, I know you've probably worked a lot over the past two weeks, and so I feel your pain, and thank you for going through and reworking all this and coming to, I think, a very reasonable solution. Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to echo what Councilmember Hinohosa, and Councilmember Hill said as well. I do appreciate you working with the residents. One clarification I do want to get from Matt or you as well is, I know one of the issue that the resident had is the visibility coming out on Heath Lane, the oncoming vehicle from South Capel Road. Is there any restriction on the first, let's say, three parking spaces, whether there could only be a, you know, compact vehicle or something that does not, a big truck does not park there to reduce the visibility? I mean.
Right, right now, there's no restrictions.
One of the concerns that we had discussed was, in the current situation where they're exiting onto McNear, it's generally when commercial vehicles are parked there. One of the ideas, it's not, don't know how it would be enforced other than through the ownership, would be to put no commercial vehicle parking, just a sign like a handicap sign, just says no commercial vehicles. But we did concede and give up the first parking space.
Sure.
Out of Heath. And so, it, it's quite a, quite a bit different, but a sign simply saying no commercial vehicle parking is about as far as we can take that.
And I'm not saying you need to do that. I'm just saying, you know, would you take that into consideration if that actually helps with the visibility of residents coming out from the Heath Lane? So, that's all I have on that one.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Mr. Steer, I wanted to ask, I think I see something that says visibility triangle at that corner.
Yes, sir.
And I'm, I'm assuming that complies with the, the requirements that we have stated in our regulations?
Mr. Collins is coming down.
Once we actually get the engineering plans, we will look at the detailed site distance. I know they've laid in the visibility triangle. The triangle actually goes through that first parking space, if you kind of look at it. But we're going to, we're going to look and, and see if we need to add any warning signs for, for Capel Road if that visibility is limited. But it does, you know, basically what the visibility triangle says is you can't put an obstruction within that triangle. But if you look at the actual visibility, the edge, it goes through that first parking space. So, I think restricting commercial vehicles is a really good idea for those first couple spaces. I think that would help a lot. I think that's the experience at the adjacent property. You have large trucks parked in that first spot, and it's a problem. So, I think that will help a lot. And we'll, you know, again, when we get the plans in, we'll look at, at that site distance as well. as well.
Thank you.
Protem Hinojosa Smith.
Assuming there's no other questions, so I'm looking to make a motion. Is there anybody? Okay. I move to close the public hearing and approve item 11, with conditions.
Second by Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neville, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed. The motion carries.
Very much. This has been a two-week, I don't know what to call it, but thank you very much for your time.
Let Ms. Green know we missed her.
And thanks for, and I, from my standpoint, I, I really appreciate you guys working with the neighbors and the neighborhood and, and working with our staff to come out with a, you know, a very nice solution that, that I think is going to enhance the area, so thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, item number 12, Ms. Tien is coming down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mean, I am here to present the budget amendment that is being brought forward for your approval, and it's to reflect changes in the revenues and expenditures of the city. This will be the last official item of the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget. This step is the paperwork following up the actions council has already taken. So basically, it's adding the budget items approved by council during the fiscal year that require a budget amendment and adjusting revenues for items like sales tax recovery, bond proceeds, and grant awards. The memo provided in your packet provided a summary of the proposed changes to the revenues and expenditures of the various funds. I would like to take a few minutes to provide a summary of the proposed amendments for some of the major funds included in the information that was provided in your council packet. So I'll begin with the general fund. General fund revenues are being increased almost, or a little over 4.8 million, and the revenue categories attributing to the increase are sales tax revenue, which includes sales tax received from sales tax recovery services, the transfer from CRDC, which is related to receiving more sales tax revenue, interest earnings, building permits, and then various park and recreation fees. General fund expenditures are being increased about $2 million, and included in that amount is a 1.4 million, which was set aside in designated fund balance. Specifically, the amount was designated for the Beltline Road project, so that the city could issue less in debt for that project. In addition, the economic development agreement with Vary, Vary, to provide utility lines, which was approved by council, was also included in designated fund balance. General fund expenditures are also being amended to reflect the cost of the finance position that was unfunded and council authorized filling in on January 26th. Expenditures also reflect the increase in the cost of the May election approved by council on March 23rd, and the cost of the deputy city secretary position that council authorized on July 13th. Community information services expenditures are being increased to reflect the cost of the website development that was approved by council on May 12th of 2020, and audio and video upgrades that were in response to council's request to broadcast public meetings at various locations throughout the city. This also included some upgrades to the broadcast booth in order to accommodate those additional locations. Included in that budget is also changes to the dais to accommodate additional computer screens. Next is the debt service fund revenues and expenditures, which are being amended to reflect the, the bonds, the general obligation refunding bonds that were approved by council on April 27th. The revenues need to be amended to reflect the bond proceeds that, from that issue, and then those proceeds are being reflected in the expenditures since then the expenditures were, were used to, to pay the bonds off. Next, the revenue and expenditures of various special revenue funds are being amended. The special revenue funds receive their funding from various revenue sources, and the use of those funds to fund expenditures is restricted to those specific sources. Therefore, expenditures are not budgeted until an expenditure that conforms to the restrictions is identified. So the amendment to the special revenue funds is to reflect actual revenue received and any qualified expenditures that have been identified during the year. For example, the tree preservation revenues are being amended to reflect the amount of tree mitigation fees received, and expenditures are being amended to reflect the cost to replace trees and shrubs damaged by the February freeze that was approved by council on September 14th. The ARPA grant fund is another example. The revenues are being amended to reflect the approximately 5.1 million payment received, and then expenditures are being amended to reflect the one-time payment to employees who were on the city's payroll as of March 31st of 2020, as authorized by council on September 14th. Rolling Oaks Memorial Cemetery Fund is another special revenue fund that's being amended. The revenues are being increased to reflect the increase in revenue from burial and other services provided by the cemetery, and then expenditures are being amended to reflect an increase in supplies and services necessary to provide the additional burial and services. And the special revenue funds associated with sales tax are also being amended. The infrastructure maintenance fund, crime control prevention district, and CRDC are all being amended to reflect an increase in sales tax, which includes sales tax received from sales tax recovery services. Expenditures of these funds are also being amended. Expenditures for CRDC is being, they're being increased to reflect the dredging and wall repairs at the canal at Great Vine Springs Park, which was approved by council on June 8th. The transfer from the CRDC to the general fund that is based on sales tax is also being increased, since sales tax revenue is being increased. And expenditures of the infrastructure maintenance fund are being increased to reflect the cost of emergency roof replacements at 265 that was approved by council on November 10th of 2020. The last fund type included in this amendment is the enterprise fund. An enterprise fund provides goods or services to the general public for a fee. The water and sewer fund is the enterprise fund, and the one, the revenues of this fund are being amended to reflect the net impact of a reduction in revenue related to the one-time February freeze credit provided to all customers, and an increase in revenue related to the third and final credit from Dallas Water Utilities related to the Sabine River Authority settlement. Expenditures of the water and sewer fund portion of, are being amended to reflect the portion of the cost of design of both the Southwestern and Woodhurst that was approved by council on November 10th of 2020. And so this is the brief explanation of the proposed budget amendment, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question back, I think it was on the general fund, you talked about a 1.4 million dollars that was coming out of the designated, designated fund. Can you just walk back through what, what it was designated for and what did it go to cover when, when, when it was released? Can you just walk back through that?
Yes, so in designated fund balance, we had designated about 1.2, a little over that, for the Beltline Road project-
Okay.
-so that we could reduce the amount of bonds that we were going to issue for that project.
Okay, and so that was not in the original budget? The, the one, to release the 1.4 was not in the original budget?
Correct, it, because we did it for two years, so there was the portion that was included in the 2021 budget, and then there was a portion from 2020 that was a set aside and design, and then was put into designated fund balance when that year was closed.
Okay.
And then, so the two of them are now in the current budget.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Tien, I have a question on the first page. Next to community, development, admin, the current budget is 1.3 million, and amending budget is, looks like 15 million? Is that number got-
Oh, it should be, I'm, I apologize, there's a typo. It's one, it's 1,525,000.
Okay, so that's, okay.
I apologize.
So that's one question I have.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned, on the September 14th, we approved, you're talking about the increase for the employee 3% on the work session, right?
It was authorized during the work session, that was my understanding. Is that the direction during work session was to move forward with that?
Okay. Can I ask one more question, or you want to wait?
Go ahead.
I can wait.
Go ahead.
I know, I'll pass. Thank you.
Counsel, any, any other questions? I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Carol.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number 12, the revised budget.
I have a second by Councilmember Neville. All in favor?
Long, Hinojosa Smith, Carol Neville, Hill opposed, John and Matthew. The motion carries.
13 is the city manager reports, project updates, and future agenda.
Mayor and council, just some quick updates. Airline, all work is complete, with the exception of a few landscaping items. Cambria Wise Way utilities are complete. Wise Way paving is about 40% complete. Cambria is about 80% complete. Sidewalk and landscaping will commit soon. Plantation, water line, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer installations are in progress. Stream G6, work on two of the sites is nearing completion, and work on the remaining three sites is convincing. Regarding Beltline, the contractor is expected to begin initial phase of work in mid-October. If you recall, that's related to the utilities, so there'd be some single lane closures on and off. The Twitter account has been established, and the automated travel time feed will start when traffic impacts begin. And just in case no one heard, we did, the city of Capel's Parks and Recreation Department was awarded the National Gold Medal for Excellence in Parks and Recreation Management. It's the highest honor in the parks and rec industry and defines that Capel's Parks and Recreation is the top department in the United States in our population side. The award will be formally presented at the future council meeting. And just to put that in perspective, there are five categories with different municipalities. There were 20, I believe it's 20, that were recognized, like, we have been recognized in the past as a gold medal finalist, so you could say that we're one of the top five parks and recreation departments in the country.
Thank you very much. I have a question for Mr. Lan and Mr. Collins, about the, some projects that he mentioned, project updates.
It's not, I'm sorry, it's not on our agenda tonight.
Okay.
If you can submit those to the city manager's office, he can address those with you offline.
Okay.
Or at the next council meeting, depending on the topic.
Okay.
Item number 14 is the mayor and council reports. On October 9th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m., the Capel Art Center will feature Buddy, the Buddy Holly Story. This is the world's most successful rock and roll musical and continues to thrill audiences around the world. Buddy tells the story of Buddy Holly through his short yet spectacular career and features the classic songs "That'll Be the Day," "Not Fade Away," "Oh Boy," Ritchie Valens' "La Bamba," and many more. The Mr. Cooper Group Lobby Gallery opens one hour prior to the performance, and the main hall doors open 30 minutes prior to the, to the actual performance. Counsel, do you have anything to report? Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. Last, sorry, last Wednesday, September 22nd, at the senior center, I did get to meet the seniors. There was about 25 seniors that actually attended, and they were very happy to get together after the long COVID restriction. They had talked about that they want to go and get back to having the programs that they had prior to COVID, such as being able to have meals and sit down and be able to talk together. I know that the, the city, I believe, it's Lacy had, Lacy McKinney had restricted some of the programs because of the COVID precaution, but the seniors believe that they are ready to get back to normal as possible, so they wanted to go and have meetings and be able to have meals together, and they're asking the, the city to possibly look into surrounding neighbors, because a lot of the seniors have actually went to surrounding, surrounding neighbor cities senior center because of the services that we, that Capel has not provided. One of the senior center, seniors also had mentioned about the, I know that we took away the, I guess, the check drop box for the, the water billing, and they had talked about how they could, if it's possible to put that, put that drop box back, because it made it easy for them, for those who are not techie, you know, savvy on that part. So they had asked about that. Let's see. And the other question they had was, I know the last, very last time, they had, we had provided the, the percentage of citizens that were vaccinated, and they were wondering if we, if they could have that kind of information to see where, where we are as a city. So that's all I had.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. You skipped the line, item 13. So are you saying we cannot ask the city manager questions on the project that he just reported?
So the city manager is just a report, it's not a, I mean, you're welcome to take up questions outside of the council chambers and have those reported back to you.
When do you ask questions, the city manager? Any items?
Anytime you want to. He's available to answer your questions any time of the day.
No, publicly?
Any time of the day.
Now?
So there, you have to ask for an agenda item to be put on the agenda, so that it can be put on, so that we can discuss it publicly?
No, this is the reports that he presented to the council. If the council member have a follow-up question, when do we ask?
As I explained in an email to the council earlier, we were asking for questions to be sent earlier, so that we could prepare for the answers.
That is one way of doing it. Another way of doing is answering the, asking the question at the dais.
That's true, but if you're asking questions randomly, we need to have some way for our staff to be able to prepare the answers for you, so that they're accurate. I suppose you will.
You said randomly asking questions, so are you asking us to ask you questions that you could prepare the answers for? Is that, is that how it works?
No, what I'm saying is, it's only fair to the people that you're asking questions of to give them a preview of what you're asking, so that the proper answer can be given. Many of the questions that were asked tonight are very deep and involved and require considerable research. Fortunately, our staff was aware and was prepared to answer those questions.
So many of the questions that are asked about the projects that maybe each person is involved with, they have firsthand knowledge, so what is there to be prepared when they, when they're asking questions about the ongoing projects?
At a high level, you can ask any question you want to, but I will guarantee you, you can ask a question to the depth of, that the person that you're asking won't be able to answer.
And if they can't answer, they always have opportunity to bring back and answer. So why is that, that they cannot be asked at the time?
They can be asked at the time.
But you just said, you just said that we have to ask earlier.
It is more efficient for you to ask your question, or at least give the, our staff the ability to research the question before you ask it.
So where does it say that we have to ask questions before we actually ask questions here on the dais?
It doesn't. It's a courtesy. It's a professionalism.
So they could be prepared with the answer? Is that how it works?
And Mayor?
So- Mayor Protem?
Yep, so my understanding of item 13, and maybe Mr. Hager wants to help out with this in some way, shape, or form, because I, I don't think what this discussion is is a productive one. I would say that what we've done is that is a city manager report. So the city manager comes with information, and he's reporting on certain items. If we want him to report on certain things and certain projects, then we can ask him beforehand to come prepared with it, or we can make sure that we have the staff members that are here that can answer those particular questions. So I guess, Mayor, I guess what I'm saying, and to our council members, is, the way I hear it is, we're not saying that this isn't an open Q and A, this is a, the city manager comes with a report with certain information, and I, I would ask right now that, I guess, I don't even know what, what the right way- ask right now that, I guess, I don't even know what the right way is, but for us to take this conversation into a work session of how we want to do things going forward, and find a way to do this in a productive way, rather than having a, a discussion at the dais currently. So, Mr. Hager, do you want to help me with item 13?
One of the issues you have is Open Meetings Act. There should be a council agenda item with a subject matter that's identified. I assume it's fair game to ask. What you can't do is have a deliberation, was an exchange between you, the manager, you, and rest of members of the council about something that's not on the agenda. So if you've asked him a question about something that's not on the agenda or his report, now we're violating Open Meetings Act. So that's what I've got to say about that. Yes?
Can you clarify one more thing? That do we have to go ahead and submit a question before we actually come to the meeting?
That's, that's y'all's business, not Mr. Hager's business.
Okay. I mean, is that required by law? Okay.
I have a follow-up question.
Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. That was my understanding. The manager provides a report to the council, whatever the update is going on in the city. The follow-up question to that report, is it, is it, can we ask that question?
Well, under that agenda item, no.
Okay.
Because you don't know what the subject matter is, nor does the public. It's not, not to have the manager prepared or you prepared, it's the public so they know what to listen to and what. So in this case, if Mr. Land's giving a report, this project's completed, that's project's completed, this road's going to open, this road's going to close, that's fine. If you need a clarification, we have traditionally allowed you some latitude.
Okay. Thank you for that question.
If you start drilling down into the details of why is the project late in this, and what is, the public works done, and why the traffic's this, then I would argue that you don't have an agenda item. So it's just more informational at this stage instead of deliberative, which is what you were kind of engaging in. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Item number 16 is public service announcement, announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Anything from council? No, moving on. Item number 16 is necessary action from the executive session. There was no action from the executive session, so therefore, there being no further business before the council, we are adjourned at 9:29 p.m.
I thought we still had work session items. No? Oh, sorry. Thank you.